Good evening, everyone. Tonight is Wednesday, July 24, 2024. It's 6:01 PM, and I'd like to call to order the City of Columbus City Council meeting for tonight. Our first order of business will be the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join us if you'd care to.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, without borders, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to make a motion to approve the agenda for the July 24, 2024 City Council meeting, that's tonight, with the addition of a supplemental bill list to Item B.2 of the consent agenda and Item 7. B, Resolution 2024-05. Is there a second?
This is Sue. I'll second.
Any questions or discussion? If not, I'll call for the vote.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye. Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
And Jesse, aye. Onto Letter B, Number One. So this is the consent agenda, the June 26, 2024 City Council Meeting Minutes approval, approval of bill payments as attached in the July 24, 2024 Payment Summary, Pages 1 through 4, and the supplemental bill list. I'll make the motion again to approve the consent agenda as presented in Item B.2 of the July 24, 2024 City Council Packet. Is there a second?
So this is Janet. I'll second that with the addition that there's just some minor typographical errors on the minutes to be corrected, nothing that changes the context.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second. I'll call for the vote.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye. Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
And Jesse, aye. Onto Letter C, Public Open Forum. Is there anyone in person or online who would like to speak at public open forum?
Hi, my name is Shannon Hoheisel, and I would like to, if I can.
Certainly. Thank you for joining us tonight, Shannon.
Thank you for having me.
What would you like to talk about?
The reason that I am joining you this evening, I am representing the Minnesota Ladies Slippers Pheasants Forever chapter, and we are doing a partnership with Running Aces and a fundraiser evening next Thursday, and we're doing a raffle that we're looking to do, and we have confirmed with the Minnesota Gambling State Control Board that we do not need a license since the pricing is under $1,500, but they told us that we needed to circle back with you guys for some approvals.
Yes, that's correct.
That's correct, Shannon. We did get your information this afternoon. That will be presented in the resolution we added to the agenda 2024-05. It will be presented for approval and explanation at the latter part of the meeting. So I do have your background information. It is here, and I will present it at that time.
Wonderful. Do you need anything else from me?
Not unless City Council has any questions that they would like to ask of the raffle. The raffle supports a tune program, which is camp stuff for kids, and they did this last year, too, at Running Aces, so it's something they've done before here, and it seems to be for a very good purpose.
Yeah. Any questions?
Yes. Habitat and youth events.
And what we can do if the resolution is approved, we can have that to you by tomorrow, and everything can be taken care of, because it'll have to be submitted and everything done by August the 1st.
Okay. That sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for joining us. All right. Item Number Two, Audit Report, Pages 5 and 6 in our packet. We've got Jim Eikten tonight, Cheryl, and Jack, you're going to lead the discussion.
So Jim Eikten is here from MMKR, and he's going to be reviewing the audit with us.
Thanks, Cheryl. Mayor, Members of Council, Administration, my name is Jim Eikten. I'm with MMKR CPAs here this evening.
Will you pull your makeup about an inch, trim your lips, please?
How's that?
A little closer.
For the audience at home, they want to hear me? Is that what's going on? There you go.
It's more for us up here who wants to hear you.
Mayor, Members of Council, thanks for having me this evening. My name is Jim Eikten. I'm with MMKR CPAs. I'm here this evening to provide a presentation on the audit results for the year ended December 31, 2023. I believe there's a PowerPoint. Is you running that, Cheryl?
Yes.
All right, great. The purpose of me being here is to provide or receive acceptance of the audit reports for the year end, and I believe the audit reports were provided to you in the packet. I saw some paper reports in front of you as well. Those financial statements that you're seeing there are required to be prepared annually by the city based on state statutes. You are required to then have that financial statement audited by an independent certified public accountant, which is the role that I provide for the city. We completed the audit just recently, and we have submitted the reports to the Office of the State Auditor, and tonight we're here to receive acceptance of that particular, those particular reports. We also prepare what's called the Management Report, and that Management Report is provided to you as a format, in a format that is easy to understand, and you don't necessarily have to go through the full report to understand the results of the audit. So I'm going to go through some of the highlights in that particular report and also cover it on the PowerPoint that Cheryl is running over here. So first and foremost, the audit was completed. You know, we were here in, you know, I think February, March, we came, we completed some of the aspects towards the end of May into June after some of the accounting service providers completed their information and submitted the report just recently. You'll see in our PowerPoint in the report that the audit opinions and findings, or maybe better said, lack of findings, are summarized in four bullet points on that particular document. Sure, you can probably go, oh, you're on the right page. I'm sorry. You're good. First and foremost, I was able to issue what were described unmodified opinions on that financial statement. The unmodified opinions were the opinions you were looking for. That's a clean opinion, a positive opinion in the audit results. We are required, as part of this audit, to audit your internal controls over financial related activities. Examples of those include cash receipts, cash dispersments, payroll, those internal control structures specific to financial reporting. We go into our audits of a city of your size, understanding that you don't have what we describe as perfect segregation of duties within those responsibilities. I describe that particular item as a reportable condition. I don't really like to call it a finding. You might read some of the words in the report and see that that's a finding, but in my opinion, that's a reportable item. I'm reporting to you that I audited your city with the understanding that you don't have segregation of duties. So we look for, when I do our testing of internal controls, other controls, other compensating controls that would overcome those limitations, and we're certainly finding those here. Best examples of some of those are secondary reviews of bank reconciliations, check registers being provided to City Council. Those are good examples of compensating controls. They don't overcome the limitation, but they certainly help to alleviate any concerns in the control structure. So we didn't ultimately issue any findings in that area other than noting the segregation of duties. We also audit your compliance with government auditing standards. We issued an opinion, and that was a clean opinion as well. Best example of things that pertain in that particular space include any sort of grant compliance that you have. Grants come with certain requirements and compliance areas that you have to comply with, and as an auditor, we're required to audit those items, and we did not have any concerns or findings in that area. Lastly, we are issuing an opinion on your compliance with Minnesota-specific laws and regulations. The Office of the State Auditor issues a list of every law that we're required to audit. We don't audit every law that might pertain to the city, just the ones on their list. And in that particular opinion, again, we didn't issue any findings, so in the compliance part of this audit, we don't have any findings to report, a perfect scorecard, to be honest. So that's exceptional. This is, I think, well, I know it is, my second year of doing this, and that's excellent, given it's really just year two. It takes generally a little bit longer than that as when I start getting into new audits. So this is a very positive result, you know, in the audit results. So Cheryl, if you want to go, there we go. So the second part of the audit really is the financial results for the year. My presentation in the Management Report shows, starts with an overview of some of the governmental funds and how they were generating revenues for the city. And we like to start with property values, and that particular graph you see on the screen is a summary of the last five years, six years, actually, of market values. Market values in and around the city have increased significantly over the last several years. In 2023, your market values increased about 11%, which is a little bit above the average we're seeing, but pretty close to what we're seeing in terms of increases in market values. So the next graph, I believe, there we go, shows the impact of that increase. This particular graph shows the average rates that are used by the county, if you will, to generate property taxes. So you can see the city's average tax rate used to generate revenues, tax revenues went down to 45.8 compared to where it used to be 48. What that means is your market values are increasing, lowering the average rate to get to the same volume of revenue, which is a good thing ultimately for the residents of the city. And you can see overall that's impacting other taxing jurisdictions as well, the school district and this county really showing good trend lines in that particular graph. The next graph, I believe, yes, shows how this is impacting the city's revenues on a per capita basis. So this particular graph shows the revenues of the city for all governmental funds. It excludes water and sewer funds on a per capita basis, and it does compare that to statewide data. One caveat here is the data, the comparable data is 2021, which, at the time of this published document, was the most recent data available. The State Auditor's Office has issued new data for 2022 recently, so there are other, more newer information, just so you're aware. But what's important really is when you look at that particular graph, the city's generating $1,655 per resident of the city, and that compares to 1,400, 1,300 comparable cities statewide in 2021. You can see the very top line does stand out. The city did increase its property tax levy, and it did generate additional revenues to the city even though the average tax rate went down. So really supporting that market increase was supported by additional revenues. Other items that stand out to me in that particular graph is that it is in the intergovernmental revenue line. You can see that it increased to $231 per resident. There were some additional federal dollars that came to the city that were spent on a broadband project this past year, which is shown there. You also received some additional state aid in the form of public safety aid that came from the legislature in 2023, I believe. That was additional revenues to the city. Going to the next graph, we also show the same data on the expenditure side of the equation. This graph is comparing the expenditures from a current basis and a capital basis, as well as debt service. You can see the city spent $1,438 per resident in 2023, the year that I audited. Couple of items that stand up there, you can see then on the current basis, it went from $700 to $7 last year to $783. You know, that's, most of that, or some of that, was in the area of tax increments. There were some flow-through of tax increment dollars that were, I won't call it held back, but they were vetted and cleared this past year, which is increasing those particular averages that you might see in that particular graph. You also see that the capital line was higher than last year. That can ebb and flow depending on the city's project spending. And then lastly, you can see debt service is actually going down as you pay down your debts. The standard schedules are decreasing in terms of debt service payments. It is important, really, when you look at that particular graph, to compare it to averages. Debt service management on the part of the council is important. So you're spending about $300 per resident averages, depending on the size of a city, you go anywhere from $300 to $200 per resident. So you're right in the norm, I would say, for a city of your size. So I think the next graph shows the overall general, excuse me, governmental funds change in fund balance. Fund balance is the equity position at the end of the year for each individual fund of the city. One item of note, there was a change in fund structure this past year that, kind of, the best way to put it is broke out the road maintenance fund out of the general fund and made it a separate reportable fund versus being incorporated into the general fund. All of these documents you see here, both the financial report and the management report, we separated it out so that the comparable information ultimately shows it as if it was always that way. So you can see in that particular graph, fund balances went down about 2.6 million. The item that stands out is a refunding bond payment. The city refunded a bond. I don't remember exactly the date, but the payment of that bond happened in 2023, and you can really see that on that presentation as to declining the overall fund by, in that particular fund, by almost 3.6 million. Nothing concerning there, it was just a good transaction for the city. It's just happening, stands out on that graph. The general fund, you can see, increased its fund balance from 4.9 million to 5.2 million, increasing overall fund balance by almost 300,000. Certainly a positive trend in general fund balance as shown on that graph. And we have some other graphs. I think the next one, I believe, there we go, shows some trend lines in general funds' financial position specifically. This particular graph shows the fund balance went from 4.9 to 5.2. The budget projected a slight decline in fund balance, so having an increase in fund balance of almost 300,000 was certainly a positive, as mentioned earlier. The city does have a fund balance policy that states that the total general fund balance is to maintain at a minimum of 50% of operating budgets. That's pretty standard language that you see at a city. You need cash to operate. You're only getting paid property taxes ultimately twice a year, so a minimum 50% is pretty standard. The Office of the State Auditor certainly recommends that in their language. So at the end of the year, when you do the math on the city's fund balance as a percentage of operations, you're currently at 137%. So you're certainly meeting that minimum and actually have significantly more than that minimum standard. What that means to the council is you're aware that you have additional fund balance. It can be used in a variety of ways. It can be stayed there for future uses. There's no requirements to do anything with that, other than as a council and administration, you should be aware of where you stand at the end of it each year. So I believe we do provide some additional graphical presentations. Here we show some general fund revenue information for the last year. You can really see on that graph the change in property tax revenues for 2023, increasing to 2.7 million compared to almost 2 million the previous two years. You can also see the intergovernmental revenue that I previously mentioned stands out on that particular graph, very minimal amounts in the previous two years, and really increasing on that particular graph really stands out. The next one, graph shows expenditures. Here's again a three-year presentation of general fund expenditures. This particular graph really, again, shows that capital outlay of the broadband project stands out. When you look at the purple graph at the very right-hand side, you can see the increase in capital, which is, in this case, you know, a one-time cost that won't go back to normal in the future, it dissipates. So we also, in our report, go over the enterprise funds. In this case, it's the water and the sewer funds. This graph shows the change in financial position. In this case, it's equity or net position, showing an increase of about 100,000 in fund balance, which is certainly a positive trend. There were some increases in revenues in these funds this past few years. If you look at the next graph, Cheryl, thank you. This particular graph shows the water fund, a five-year presentation, showing revenues, expenditures, and two, what I would call, net income or operating income lines. One line, the green line, is before depreciation, excuse me, after depreciation, and the red line is before depreciation. Why is there two lines? Well, depreciation's a non-cash item. You're really depreciating something you already paid for. So the red line is really representative of cash flow. Are you cash flowing? Are you generating enough cash to pay your current expenditures? And certainly that red line shows that to be the case. But the green line shows that you're not covering depreciation, so ultimately, when there's future capital needs of the city, you'll have to find other means to pay for those capital-related items, which is clearly shown on that particular graph. Is there a concern on the part of an auditor on that? No, that's a philosophical financing arrangement or trend that you're using, which is very common for cities like yourself. The sewer fund is very similar here. You're seeing the revenues, five years of revenues and expenses in this fund, again, both improving. Both the water and sewer fund did actually see increases in revenues from consumption. That's pretty much very similar related to weather. Most cities had increase in consumption, just in 2023, related to weather for that year. But overall, again, you can see here the red line is a positive cash flow, and the green line is really not funding depreciation, as noted earlier. I think that's the last presentation or last graph, so I will summarize. The overall audit results were very positive. We issued a clean opinion on your financial statements, no findings to report, which is exceptional. The general fund financial position is certainly very healthy, setting money aside not only for the minimum expectations but for future needs of the city, increasing its overall fund balance, both at the general fund and all the other funds, as well as the enterprise funds. Lastly, we also reflect on the budget of the city was certainly, you met expectations there as well as auditors. We look for compliance in that area as well, the budgeted expectations or the budget met expectations, which is important. As a council, you want to see that. Audit results mimic what we passed. So all in all, I want to lastly say that the city is very dedicated to the audit process. I work in many, many cities and have over 100 clients, and it doesn't always look and feel like it is here at the city. The city staff, even this year with really a change in very top-line staff, are very dedicated in making sure that this audit got done and complete, and it doesn't always look like that when you have significant turnover. So I give credit to the staff to have, for the positive results, specifically to the audit. So with that, I'll turn it over to you for any questions that you have for me.
Anybody with any specific questions?
I just have one. So this is Janet. When you talked about the city's fund balance policy and our current percent over budget as compared to kind of what the, I don't know, recommended is, I don't remember seeing a number that large last year or even in any year, so how did that become so much, I mean, really, did that all happen in one year, or were there other reasons that all of a sudden it showed up in this audit?
Are you referencing the 137% that I'm talking about? Well, first, first of all, and I have to look back, but remember there was a change in fund structure?
Right.
So you took some of your expenditures out of the general fund and moved them to a capital fund, which lowered the denominator, if you will. So you have a lower denominator. Your fund balance actually went up by almost 300,000. So both of the numbers are moving, you know, significantly, which is the main reason for that the number being as high as it was. I'd have to look back. I didn't really look too closely, but I'm curious as to what the number was last year, now that you say that.
Yeah, I don't, I, right off the top of my head, I thought we were right around or a little bit more than sort of what that recommended was. I don't recall us being almost three times it.
I think you're right. Your intuition is pretty accurate there.
Anything else, anyone?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. As it relates to, you had alluded to 137% funded. Is that based off months of bills that we need to pay? Is that, like, outgoing funds were 137% funded that way?
Yeah, that's a good question. The 137 is your fund balance, your equity position as a percentage of total expenditures for the year, annual expenditures. So that's really of operations. You could go, you could go a whole year plus another 30% of another year and still have cash or equity to pay all your bills for a whole entire period.
Okay.
Another way to look at it is you need 50% at a minimum because you're not getting paid by the county, you know, for a whole six-month period. So you almost have, you know, two and a half times dollars in equity to cover annual operations.
And that's to accommodate, say, no money was coming in, we'd be able to pay the bills for that.
Right, exactly. Thanks. So typically, what you see when you get to that level action, you know, councils look at that fund balance, if you will, and say, well, now what? And they offer that to council or, excuse me, to administration and say, well, what do we have? What projects do we have that we might be able to utilize those for? Or maybe we want to set that aside for future debt service needs. Maybe we want to set it aside for capital-related items. Maybe you want to use it in the enterprise funds for water and sewer projects. I mean, there's all kinds of items that you can use it for. You're not required to use it at all, to be honest, but that's generally the discussion that goes on after an audit like this, is well, now what?
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Nope.
Well, thank you for a good report. And let's take a minute. Thank you, Cheryl.
Yes, thank you to both of you.
Aren't we earlier than we were last year, too?
Yes.
So next year, we might be done by March 1st?
Look at her face.
Her car, her car was here late a lot of nights. I notice. I don't get home early, so.
Oh.
As well as Jack's. Well, if I could, just a minute on that. We did have a nice, excellent, actually, meeting with Jim and Jack and Cheryl, actually going into next year's audit and how we can get that done faster, and we actually laid And we actually laid out plans. I did, and helped with Cheryl's approval. We kind of let plan out next year as well. So we are agreeing with you on that, that this can be done earlier and continue to make it earlier.
And to echo Jim's statements and her compliments to the staff, Cheryl was the driver of this. She did an outstanding job and she deserves all the credit for the budget, for the audit. She did fantastic.
Thank you, Cheryl.
Thank you, Cheryl.
I have one other quick question. So I know we always get dinged on the segregation of duties, as does every city of our, of our size. But we did just hire another additional staff person in the accounting or in the finance area. Is that going to help at all? Or like, what do you have to do to get that one off of your radar? How many more people would you have to have to split that up? I'm just curious.
Yeah, one person's probably not going to do it. But it will certainly help with the workflow, I will say. You know, kind of getting the more quicker and faster and getting the audit done.
I mean, you list sort of the, the things that were all done sort of by one person. If there was, I'm just, just curious. Like, if every one of those things were done by a different person, would you say, oh, now that, now that finding goes away?
Exactly.
Just curious.
I'll actually make a note. I really didn't, it didn't come to me that that's even a possibility. But now that you mention it, it could be a possibility. And I will make a note for next year to evaluate that as I do the audit. Good question.
Very good. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
We'll see you when?
Next year, maybe.
Yeah, a year from, no, next February.
Well, we might not, but until January.
Thank you very much.
Two people, mine.
Well, more good news. Thank you, everybody.
Could we have a motion to accept the audit as presented by MMKR?
So I'll move to accept the City of Columbus 2023 audit report prepared by the independent accounting firm of Malloway, Monahue, Karnowski, and Reddasevich, MMKR. Did I do those right?
Second, Rob.
Any other questions or discussions?
The best.
We'll call for the vote.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye. Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
Jesse, aye. Onto number three, budget, 2025 budget discussion, enterprise funds, pages seven and eight in our packet.
Thank you, Jesse. Attached in your packet are the proposed 2025 budget summaries for the enterprise fund 601 Water and 602 Sewer. The 25 budget proposals for these two accounts will be presented tonight to City Council for review and discussion. At this time, we're looking at the item that's on your handout, which is also presented on the screen. And we're looking at projected cost in the water fund of $107,648, cost in the sewer fund of $132,450. Projected revenues in the water fund of $160,000. Projected revenues in the sewer fund of $140,000. These funds do not include anything collected through SAC fees. The SAC fees are unpredictable. These are just generated by our user costs, our user fees, and the bills that we collect from them. So I don't know if you want to go with that line by line. If you have any questions, just dictate to us how you want us to go over these numbers with you.
This is Janet. I do have a question. On the wages, is this, okay, I'm looking at the water fund first. Is this just Carissa for her billing? Or do we also have some of public works wages in here?
Currently, it's just for Carissa, but we're going to look at moving a portion of public works over. Because actually, we did this. We found out we have a significant gap in the revenues versus the costs. So we think we can comfortably move that over without affecting the rates for this year.
I'm sorry, say that again. You have a gap between the revenue and the?
The revenue is projected at 160,000. Expenses are at 107, so we have some room.
You have some room, okay.
And we will do that in the update of this.
And that's what I thought, too. And then, you know, I noticed that the number changed on the membership dues. What are membership dues? What little club do we belong to in our water fund?
That would be the Minnesota Rural Water Association is the big one. And I'm not sure, do we belong to the American Water Works Association, Jim?
We do not currently, but we are looking to join that one as well.
So I noticed that the number went down by a couple of thousand dollars.
Yeah, we went back and adjusted those after we looked at them. So we figured those could be reduced to reflect what expenditures have been. We don't expect any further increases in those.
Is a thousand enough to join the other one, too?
I think it should be. It's not expensive to do that.
So on, on that one that Janet's talking about, this is Rob. So 420 and 2023 up to 1,000, that's to account for that new membership. Is that, okay, thank you.
And the revenue projections are based on what we took in for 2023. So if we have additional connections, then that's going to result in higher revenue figures.
And where are we with figuring that additional connection piece out?
That's something that we're getting ready to get started on that. Cheryl and I have had some interesting conversations over the past two days with some people that are trying to purchase a piece of property and are facing the reality of having to pay the deferred assessments. As we talked about before, we've identified 30 people that have service that passes by them that aren't connected. We're going to develop a way to contact them and start the process of trying to get those people connected. It's an aggressive schedule, but hopefully by the end of next year, we'll work on trying to get the majority of those connected to the system. In looking at some of this, I think we're going to run into some, some issues because the sewer access or the SAC charges are not very much. In fact, there's something we might want to look at raising. It's $511 per SAC unit. Some of our bigger costs are probably going to be on the sewer side. But the water WAC fees are calculated. It's somewhat of a complicated formula. I thought I had to be Robert Oppenheimer and Albert Einstein today to try to figure it out. But it's based on benefit to the acreage of property served. You take the acreage of a property, you essentially subtract the undeveloped portion of that out, and you wind up with a benefiting acreage. And there was apparently some type of an arbitrary ERU or YQ designed to add a five per acre. So on a particular piece we were looking at today, their net benefiting acres were nine dollars, or nine acres. So they owe 45 city WAC units at $1,821 apiece. So, and I'm not sure if that was designed in, in a way that was designed to collect and capture the money, to amortize the loans. I don't know exactly how that is. But we found out, too, that a lot of people that had assessments had them deferred, and they've sat there and made no payments on them. And there's been substantial interest accrued on these things, which is going to drive some of the cost up. It's going to be a challenge on this, but it's something that we desperately need to do and get started on in the next couple of weeks or by the time we get through the audit and the budget.
Is this something we should put on a workshop schedule or something?
It would be very good to have it discussed at a workshop meeting to try to figure out if there's direction or exactly how we want to do that. And if there's any other things other than just saying, you know, everything's going to be paid upfront. One of the things that we were talking about on this property today is it is for sale, and they were informed that all these costs had to be paid at closing.
Just a question, Jack. You said 1,800 and then at 45 credits? So we're talking like 80-plus thousand dollars?
Correct, right around 87 grand.
Okay, plus the cost it's going to be for them to hook it up, right?
Yeah, plus the cost. That's the connection charge, the physical connection charge is not something that we do, they do, but they do have to put an escrow up to cover that.
When you, Mr. Mayor and Council, when you prepare for your workshop, you might want to go back to some of those early minutes because I recall when people were coming in for deferrals, they were informed that interest would be clicking throughout that term and that it could be substantial depending on the term.
And to give you an example, on this one particular property, the assessment fee was like 101,000 and the interest charges were 55?
58.
$58,000. But now they hadn't paid anything on this since 2008 either, so.
And one other just item of history, the ERU, if you will, was the equivalent residential unit. So converted from what you could, what you could expect for a home on a similar parcel of property times the, what would be generated by a commercial property. So five ERUs would be equivalent of five home sites in terms of flow. So there was kind of a method to the madness, but I'm sure that'll come out in a work session and help you kind of revisit history.
So we do have a bit of a challenge for us on this, but it's something that needs to be initiated as soon as possible, especially with the rising cost of operating these systems, new requirements that are going to be coming down, and some other infrastructure that we'll need. We do need to broaden that customer base. And then we also need to talk, too, about establishing what we want to do with depreciation charges. Currently, we do not put anything in the budget for depreciation. It only covers our operating costs, and our operating costs have been operating in the black. But at some point, depreciation needs to be there, at least if nothing else, to cover what our future infrastructure needs are going to be.
All right, item number four, set the agenda for the August 5th.
Oh, wait a minute. Want to talk about the sewer?
Yep, I have one more question, too. And I don't know if you were talking about the, I'm looking at the last line in the water fund, capital system maintenance. That wasn't related to what you were just talking about, was it?
No, that's some amount we put aside each year to cover any types of emergency repair projects, any types of other needs that are excessive in nature, one of which we'll also talk about, too, when we talk about the proposal for the cleaning and the inspection of the sewer system. Those are funds that are needed when you have an issue with the water system or the sewer system, you get the bill. And then, you know, sometimes it's going to be $50,000 to get something fixed. So we need some sufficient funds in there to cover that cost.
I was just noticing that most, everything is flat except that one up. But you, we must move out of the, move that out of the fund because there's no actuals to know how much we spent out of the capital system maintenance.
And I'm not exactly sure how that was accounted for in the past. One of the bases we were using that is just what we're, what we may encounter on the sewer system could be encountered on the water system. To give you an example, if we have a major water leak, it's going to cost us, we're going to probably start out at $25,000 to $30,000 to get it fixed. And depending on where it is, if it's in the pavement, it's going to cost more. So those are things that, you know, we don't really budget for. But I think we need, this is kind of the, the fund that covers those types of expenses.
So the most recent example that we have is, remember when we were talking about the $100,000 well rehab that ultimately ended up costing 25,000? You don't see it on here because we were able to use ARPA money for it. So that's what that stuff is for. It's kind of, you know, you start budgeting money in the beginning. Our system is new, so everything works as it should. And as time goes on, pipes start to wear or, you know, things start to degrade, pumps go bad. It's, so you need money to repair those things. That's what that money's for.
Okay.
So at this point, we haven't had any major repairs, but we're, you know, socking money away for that stuff, so.
And as Jim says, we're starting to enter that portion of the life of the system that's at least 15 to 16 years old. So there will probably be more maintenance costs with this in the future on the existing portions of the system.
Okay.
It'd be like electronics, you know, all of the control systems are 15 years old. It, you know, those things start to break down. They don't make those parts anymore, so now it's a replacement. So, I mean, all of that stuff is, is what you plan for. Hope that you don't have to use it, but at some point, you're, you know you're going to.
Well, so maybe if we haven't used it, maybe that's part of what's in our fund that we have a little bit over, like?
Yeah, and currently in the water fund, the balance in that fund, I believe, is what? A million, close to a million dollars? And that seems like a lot of money, but in those types of public utility things, it is not. Public utilities are a very expensive business, especially when things go wrong. In the sewer fund, I think the balance is somewhere over $400,000.
Okay.
And, you know, the other thing, too, we've discussed upgrades to the water system that may be required in the future with either things to synchronize our system better or the water tank, some of these funds could be used to help offset those costs, too.
Okay.
Anybody else?
I think the only other question I had was in the sewer fund. It would be, well, sewer expense, Met Council? Because that was really the only one that really went up.
That's what we have to pay each year to cover the discharge, our flow charges for the treatment of our sewage effluent. And they send us that bill, and it's based on their projections. It was, went up probably $20,000. We asked them what the reasons were. They're always like a year behind on these. So this accounts for gloves, probably some improvements to the hotel or increased usage of running aces. So as we add these other establishments on, these flow charges are going to increase. So those are things we need to watch closely, and those are the things that are probably going to affect our rates as much as anything.
Basically, every year we do reports. We tell them how many gallons we send them. They bill us appropriately for that. So it's kind of a double-edged sword. We want business to come in, but that generates more, more water usage, more sewer usage. This will go up as, as, you know, development goes.
Okay. Yeah, I just noticed that, I mean, our actuals are, don't go over 40,000. So I was just curious how that?
Well, on, on that one, too, the 57, 50,000, 750 was their actual cost last for what we'd budgeted for 2024, based on what the Met Council sent us, what their flows were for that year. So we had the 2020, if we could go through the portion of the year. But those are paid monthly, so there's really no real breakdown. So you can see, you know, is it this much this month? So it's just a flat monthly fee that we pay them. You have to divide that by 12, so it's about $4,000 to $5,000 a month we pay the Met Council for those flow charges.
Okay. I think that was the only other question I had.
Anybody else?
So is the plan, then, you come back with, I mean, a revised one with the public works salary and fringe added into this in time for us to include it in our preliminary levy?
That's correct.
Okay.
We just wanted to go over this and show you where we were now. This is the first report on it. It gives us time to analyze, too, once you get it in this forum and table. But the one that we will bring forth for the preliminary budget hearing, we'll have some additions, too, in the cost of transferring some of our either current admin staff or public work staff over to absorb some of their salaries from the water budget.
Okay. Okay.
Do we need to take any action on this?
No, this is just for discussion, review, and any direction from City Council.
All right, Jack, number four, agenda for the August 5th.
City Council Workshop Meeting is scheduled for Monday, August the 5th, 2024 at 5:30 PM. Following items are recommended for meeting agenda discussion. Review and discussion of the proposed changes to Chapter 14, Public Health, Wells, Sewers, and Utilities. And we'd like to kind of break this up into two different items. We have a lot to cover on this. And then also include the last two items on our budget preliminary discussions from, is the last part of that meeting, and that would be the Parks Board. And also, I'd like to add another item on there too, is just the preliminary discussion of a potential rezoning consideration for one of our business areas around Lake Drive. And those are the three items that I would recommend that we include on the meeting.
Can you repeat that rezoning of what?
It's a rezoning of our general commercial area on Lake Drive, a consideration to rezone that possibly to mixed use.
Okay.
And we just go over, we just present what we've run in, not run into, but encountered, and some things that might make it a little bit easier when we're dealing with developers that come in there.
So there'll be three items?
Yes.
Okay. May I make the motion?
Yes, save, you need to move.
So I'd move to approve the agenda for the August 5th, 2024 City Council Workshop Meeting, presented in item C3 of the July 24th City Council Meeting Packet with the addition of the third agenda item, preliminary discussion of rezoning of the general commercial business district off of Lake Drive.
This is Sue, I'll second.
Any other questions or additions? Or call for the vote?
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye. Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
And Jesse, aye. Letter D, Consultant Liaison and Staff Report, City Engineer Kevin.
Yeah, we're looking at making payments on our payment maintenance projects, the first one being their micro-surfacing project, pay estimate number one. This is to Aztec Corporation, and that's in the amount of $213,248. The project is essentially complete, but we're just working out some discussions on some payment items. And so it might be another month before we get that resolved. But I do recommend making this first payment on the project.
So through the mayor to Kevin, what is our remaining balance on, as far as draws goes after this?
As far as, on this particular project?
Yeah. And you can get it to me after, that's fine.
No, actually, I have the same question because I was having a hard time making the numbers make sense. Between your memo and what was shown on the spreadsheet, it looked like there was overspending, but I don't know if that's true or not, and I just don't understand the numbers.
Well, we had some overruns on some quantities. We did change some painting that we did on the project, some striping from what our original intent was. On 147th, we went from the original striping, and that was like a skip striping. And we, after Jim and I talked, we decided to go with a double yellow stripe for the entire length of the project. So that was an overrun on that project, or on that item. We did overrun a little bit on our battuminous material, which has been basically the oil that's in the mix. We always go with, I mean, we estimate what we think is going to be used, being that this is our first time around with this type of application. We did learn some things, but, and it's always a function too of, of the condition of the roadway, how much material we use. We did overrun a little bit on that item. And we're also discussing with the contractor, our, they came back with a higher quantity on the final course, and that's where we're kind of having a disagreement in order to close out the contract, so. It'll never totally match exactly what the bid amount was in the end. It'll either be a little bit higher, a little bit lower in the end, so.
Is it, is it correct to look at, you know, the last three columns of this and say it's going to be $10,000 higher?
At this point, correct, yes.
So with that being said, this is Rob. How does that work then with overages? Is that something that should have been approved previous for us because we approved a certain budget? And how does that work with actors when they come in?
Typically, on a unit price contract like this, you know, we look at, I mean, we could have came back and said, do you approve us switching the striping from, from a skip striping to a double, double yellow stripe? Typically, we just handle that internally. We, we make those decisions based on what the overall budget is and say that we can cover this item. So we don't bring that back to you for approval, so.
This might be good to have kind of a policy on that. I mean, I, this one's 5% over, so maybe, you know, if we had a policy that said anything that was within some tolerance doesn't need to come back. I don't know, maybe we have a policy like that. I don't know. I've never seen it. Usually, you always overestimate, and we're always like doing the happy dance because it costs less.
Yeah, I mean, sometimes these maintenance projects are a little bit hard to estimate and get exact. And sometimes you don't know what you got until you're done. That's the problem. I mean, when we, when we put down the battuminous material, you know, you, you kind of make an estimate, you get in terms of how many gallons per square yard you're going to use. But in the end, it's a matter of filling divots and holes and potholes and whatnot. And so you don't, you never hit it exact. So you're either going to be a little high or a little low, so.
This might be the first one ever that has been over.
I, that's why, that's why, I think that's why you're getting, yeah, I think that's why you're getting the reaction that you are because we're not used to that.
Usually 20 under or something.
Usually, usually it's under. So this is an oddity.
But to be fair, it's the first time we've done it, right?
Correct.
And, and you know.
With this product. So he talked about the striping too. We opted to go with the double yellow because we're really working on speeds. And the intent double yellow, you're not supposed to pass, right? So Howard Lake Drive, people walk over there, there's no shoulders. We double yellowed it. And in past, it wasn't that way. And we didn't think about that prior, but we had a conversation after, and it's like, we should do that because, you know, they don't need to pass there. So, so I mean, some of that stuff was just, you know, it just makes safety sense to do it, so. Thank you.
Typically, if we thought we were going to blow the budget out of the water, we would bring that back. But since we know what kind of what we're working with, we make some of these internal decisions, so.
Do you need a, just a motion on that?
Motion to approve the estimate as presented.
Sit down here.
Who wants to arm wrestle for it? You asked the question, Sue.
Can you give me a recommendation for a motion?
I'd make the motion to approve the payment of pay estimate number one with a micro-surfacing project for Aztec. And that would be it.
So moved.
Second.
Any other questions? Rob, I'll call for the vote.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye. Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
And Jesse, aye.
Next one is for our chip seal project, which is also complete. But this is just our estimate number one. Again, maybe jumping to initially our change order. We did have a change order on this project to modify the aggregate that we used on the project. I had specified a quarter inch chip seal aggregate, and we really wanted the eighth inch aggregate. So there was a four cent difference on the unit price, which amounted based on our bid quantity to be a change order of $7,900. But ultimately was, we did underrun on that item. So ultimately was not, a total of 7,900 is actually in the end 6,600 additional dollars on that item. But we are also underrunning on overall quantity. So we're looking good at this point of bringing this in on or under budget. We do have some quantity in here for sweeping in the spring. Jim and I were just talking about that. We don't know how much of that we will use. I'm optimistic that we may not have to sweep much at all, so there could be some savings there on the overall contract. And we did finish painting everything, but they just completed that this week, so that's not included in this particular estimate at this time.
So, this is Janet. So I would move to approve the pay estimate number one to Allied Black Top for the chip sealing project in the amount of $316,646.98. And also the approval of the change order number one that modifies the chip seal aggregate from a quarter inch aggregate to the, to the one eighth inch aggregate.
This is Sue, I'll second.
Any other questions or discussions? I'll call for the vote.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye.
Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
And Jesse, aye.
Next item is in relation to the Brown Beagle project. We had a request from the developer, John Sawyer, for a reduction in his letter of credit. This is related to the underground sewer and water utilities that will be city owned on this project. And so we have a original surety on the development agreement was for $406,250. They're making a request for 265, oh, wait a minute.
140,000?
Excuse me, 140,439.25. That's based on work done by Gustafson Excavating, who did the work for them. So we're recommending approval of the reduction in the letter of credit in the amount of 140,439.25.
So this is Janet, and I would make a motion to approve the request from Brown Beagle LLC for the reduction in their letter of credit in the amount of 140,439.25 for the completed public utilities work, leaving a balance of 265,817.5.
Rob, I'll second.
Any other questions? I'll call for the vote.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye. Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
And Jesse, aye. Anything else, Kevin?
Nothing further. I'd just say I was personally out there and saw that, saw it get backfilled, so I know it's hooked up. It's right in the middle of their driveline.
Uh, City Attorney, Phil.
Mr. Mayor and Council, just have a quick report on the Stans Inc. matter, and Kevin Myers, Stans, and the city entered into a stipulation of dismissal in July. What that does is dismiss, dismisses the case against Stans because Stans had very little to do with the spill, and they would not enter into any kind of negotiated settlement without the other driver's insurance company. Turns out the other driver was uninsured, has a number of judgments against him, and is what we call in the business, business judgment proof, meaning he's got more liabilities than assets. And so we had said to the previous city administrator and also to the current city administrator, we would pursue this as far as we could without getting into a full blown lawsuit, which would be more expensive than any recovery. So judgment was made to dismiss the case before we did that, Stans, and the city were able to obtain a default judgment against the other driver, should the other driver have ever come into means to pay that judgment. Seems unlikely given his current financial state. So we did a fair amount of investigation of his insurance. We had a number of settlement discussions, but ultimately decided in the interest of the city and the fees that would be generated, you know, legal fees that would be generated in this case, it was more prudent to dismiss the case.
Can you remind me, is this the one that ran into the side of the truck over by Love's?
Yes.
And caused the diesel spill or the?
Right.
Okay.
Crossed the center line, pickup truck ran into the diesel fuel truck, and the diesel fuel spilled across the, a brand new section of roadway.
Yes.
Which will have to be addressed at some point.
At some point, yes. I mean, it looks okay currently today, but that doesn't mean that it won't degrade at a faster rate or something of that sort, so.
Anything else, Bill?
That's all.
Thank you. Mayor and City Council, Ron, do you have anything to?
Well, I can just jump to the Parks Board Committee. Should I just read that off?
Yep.
I don't know, Jack, did, I checked some of those emails. Did you set up a joint committee meeting yet?
Not yet. That's one thing that I'll bring up in my city administrator reports.
Okay. Well, I met, at the park board meeting, they had a lot of issues they were talking about, and I could go right down, one, two, three on them. They started about the park lighting, and that's had to deal with the lighting on Kettle River Boulevard, transferring that to the, inside the park instead of showing out. They're still waiting for a bid to come in on that. And what they're decided to do is, when Lori gets the bid, she's going to contact the park boards so they can have like a mini meeting to see if the funds are worth it to do it, or reject it and go on to something else. The tenants' court came up, the issue, and there's some bids came in on that around 30,000 to resurface it. And then other things came in, such as a pickleboard addition, and there's a lot of money going on here talking. So what happened is, is the park boards come to the conclusion that they don't have a lot of money to deal out with these big issues. Along you add into the idea that the ash trees are dying over there left and right. Who's going to pay for that? Does that come out of their funds, et cetera, et cetera? So they decided they'd like to meet with the council and have a joint meeting on funding because they just don't know where they're going and don't want to fund some, or step into somewhere not knowing they're not going to have something down the end of the road. And with park dedication funds not really coming in at a high rate, they're, they're kind of unstable on decision making. So we talked about August 13th. Am I correct, Jack?
We, we did. My suggestion would be to have it on August, we can't have it on August 13th because it's election day.
Okay.
So looking at that, if City Council be willing to have a joint meeting with the park board and have it on the 14th at 5 o'clock, that would be before our City Council meeting. We wouldn't have to come back and reschedule that for another night if that met with council's schedule.
I like that idea, doing it on a City Council night.
Well, it's Rob's question on that. So if I'm recalling, last year, some of the cell phone tower money, did we allocate that back to the park?
All of it, yep.
All of it. So that isn't going to be enough to, I mean, it was quite a substantial.
Maybe this discussion, this is a big discussion, yeah. I don't think it's even.
Yeah, and I'll bring it up at that.
And getting up to it, because, I mean, they just had funds taken out for the last trees. That was like $8,000 or something like that.
For the oaks.
But we're talking about major trees. We're not talking about eight or nine. We're talking 30 or 40.
Yeah.
That have to come out, or something's got to happen with them. But that, that's one of the issues that they want to talk about. And then a big part of all their discussions have to do with money. And they look at what they got and where, if they keep, you know, if they're looking forward to redoing that path years to come up, where are they going to get the money on that? I can jump up to the other stuff because. I can jump up to the other stuff because that's a discussion, I think, that we'll have to have with them on the 14th of August. RVS or Brian Stark's lawn service was there and he said he doesn't see any increase in their service with the park. The park board, all kind of unanimous, said they're doing a good job and I agree with them 100% on that. They also talked about removal of the tenants' court timbers, those timbers up there that in the parking lot. And they moved this down the road because they're not harming anything at the moment, but we're going to put those brick stops in there. Then came the big thing was the park master plan. They developed a committee and the two people on the committee are Brad and Steve and along with Jack and where they're going to sit down and develop this master plan to bring it to them. And Bob Bodine will be an alternate on that subcommittee. But back to the ash trees and the tenants' court funding and that, there's a lot of, like I said, expenses and they don't know where they're going to go with that. Another item they talked about was the Christmas lights. They agreed to put $500 towards Christmas lights to the pavilion or holiday lights, whatever you want to put them to the pavilion. And then we talked about the dugouts for the softball fields. And they were willing to dedicate 10,000 towards that next year with the idea of waiting to see what FLA, Forest Lake Athletics Association, comes back with. I thought that, that night, I thought that Melissa was going to contact Jack and get some talking going, but there's been no movement on that side, but they're just kind of budgeting that in for next year. Whether they use it or not is another issue. We'll see what they have to do. So, but I think the big issue, and I think we all got to get our brains wrapped around it. I know they get the money from there, but the maintenance is, where does the maintenance stop? Are they required to take all them trees down out of their budget? Or is the city going to? It's that kind of thing that's coming up with the problem. And the tenants' court's the same thing. Is it, do we let it get to a point where it becomes a liability and have to close them down or resurface it? You resurface it for 30,000 and you can redo the whole thing for 100,000, but where do you, where do you get the money? So.
So Ron, as it relates to that ash bore and what's going on right now, I mean, you drive around Columbus and you're seeing it, it had spread extremely over the last couple of years. You drive by Running Aces, every one of their ash trees is dead, but they're in public right of way too. So we're responsible to take those down too. So we do have a larger issue though, right? I mean.
I did bring it up to the committee. I don't know if anybody did go to it, but I couldn't make it because I was out of town. But Senator Croon was at Running Aces. I didn't go there, but I asked them to maybe go and talk to him about getting state funding for that. Or maybe they got something going with the state to help cities get rid of these ash trees. So that was one thing. I thought they were going to, a couple of them were going to go talk. So that was the meeting.
Thanks.
Okay.
Thank you.
So my report is, I did go to that, the Senator Croon thing, and it was, nobody from the park board was there that I could see. But it was good. It was a, it was a good event and it was nice to see our state officials. It was a night, it was a beautiful night to be there. But also I wanted to mention on the park, for the record, I told Jim this last week, but I, we rented, my family rented the pavilion at the park over here for 4th of July because of the last minute when it was raining, we're like, we need something that has a shelter. And I hadn't used the park before. So it was beautiful. Everything was kept, I mean, everything was just so manicured and clean and everything and my family was very impressed with how nice the park was, so.
Thank you.
So thank you for keeping it clean and nice. That's all.
I have a couple of things that are already, the planning commissioner report and the, which is written report, and there wasn't that much going on, so you guys can just read it. I don't need to report on it. There's no action or anything like that that we need to take. Looks like it's on page 47 of our packet. I was also at the event at Running Aces and agree with Sue, it was really, it was nice to have some time to talk to both Senator Croon and Representative West and to hear their commitment to helping Columbus in the future. So that was all really good and.
And we did get to meet, sorry to interrupt you.
No, that's all right.
Mark Johnson, the minority leader was there.
Yep. He was, he was there and I think, and then we'll have a separate report on the Personnel Committee and I can bring up the other topic that I have during that time.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Only thing I have to report, one of our problem areas in Columbus where typically there's trash dumped, in Columbus here, it's kind of a regular dumping ground. But just a big thanks to Public Works. It was Sunday morning, I received a text message of a picture of what seemed to be a whole dump truck load of roofing materials was dumped in the ditch and on the roadside. And I got a call from that resident hours after thanking and wanting me to give Public Works a big shout out and from myself as well. It was cleaned up within hours and it was a lot of material. So Tim and Jim came in on, on a Sunday and got that all cleaned up to clear that roadway. So thanks to you and residents are very happy.
Where was it dumped?
Into Camp 3 Road. I think it was maybe a month ago, you were picking couches up down there as well. There's been cars, boats, all kinds of stuff dumped down there over the years. So it's right at Carlos Avery.
So we don't know who's doing the dumping. Could be.
It could be anyone.
A variety of different people.
Yeah.
And it's on city, not Carlos Avery land?
It is on the, it was on the city road, correct? It was on the city. Yeah. And in, in the city ditch.
And one of the things they made sure they went through to see if there was any indication of any kind of receipts, bills, any kind of name on it, the sheriff's department came out there and took a look at it, but there was no evidence found as to who dumped it.
Time for a camera. Put up a sign, a camera.
All right. Anything else?
That's it, Mayor. Thank you.
I have nothing. Everything's been covered that I was attending. Public Works, 182nd Lane.
Nope, you skipped the Personnel Committee.
Go for it.
So there's a couple of things. One is we've been working with Ellen on the list that we went over and prioritized of suggestions that were made as part of the organizational review. So you'll probably see that coming back to you sometime in the next two or two to four weeks. And the next step for that would be for us to decide, you know, what gets done this year, what gets done whenever, who does it. We actually made some suggestions about who would do these things. And then if there's a budgetary impact, we'll, we'll talk about that too. So you'll see that coming back. And then we are waiting to hear from our IT consultant before we can post the Assistant City Administrator position. We do have a job description that's been finalized. We talked about the budget for it in the past, so that's all good to go. But there is some work that needs to be done on that recruitment email and I, did you get a chance, Jack, to connect with Phil on that?
I have not yet, but that's on my agenda for tomorrow.
So as soon as we, as soon as we get that, that part figured out, then we can go ahead and post that. And then there is also a gal who we spoke to kind of informally. She is a marketing, communications, public relations, lots of different expertise, lives in Cedar and was interested in doing some consulting work, really doing what we are contracting kind of on a, on a temporary basis, Connor, to do to maintain our website and take care of those kinds of things. She has lots of experience in this area. She worked for the city of Monticello and did event planning, their website, their social media, coordination of volunteers, a whole bunch of different things for them for several years. And she's done similar sort of consulting for other municipalities. She was, I mean, she blew me away in terms of her, her enthusiasm, her passion for what she does, her experience. She has an LLC. She's actually more interested in working with us on a consulting basis than in becoming an employee. And she float, and Jack, you just gave me a draft of a contract, which I haven't had a chance to look at yet, but she floated an hourly rate of $25 an hour, which is, I think, really reasonable for her to do the work. So what I'd like to do is to get the council's direction that we can move forward in engaging in a contract with her LLC to provide that, those services and we'll write up a work scope and some expectations. And then transition that work from Connor to, to her. And right now, we are paying Connor at his wage and benefit. He's actually working for us as an employee. And I think we're, we got approval to charge up to 10 hours a week for that work. So if we take that same sort of dollar amount and apply it towards her with maybe a couple of weeks of overlaps, so that there can be a sharing of knowledge between the two of them, then, you know, we could potentially get her going on, on some of these things that have been kind of languishing maybe in the beginning of August, is what I'd like to shoot for, if possible.
And one thing to consider too, is that Connor now is employed. It's not a full-time job yet, but it may develop into that. So his ability to fulfill our communications and website updates and other media needs has been limited a little bit. He's only available in the evenings and on the weekends. And we didn't look at this as a long-term solution anyway. It's kind of a stopgap. This young lady has incredible experience and you can tell she's very impassioned, they're very passionate, engaged in her work in this field. And she would do it on a contract basis, as Janet said, for $25 an hour. So with Connor, we're paying $30 an hour plus, he still is getting pair of social security and Medicare payments, so that translates out to about 36. So for the equivalent 10 hours a week, we would be getting that service about $100 cheaper or we could even expand our hours a couple and not exceed what we're currently paying. So this may a good way be to bridge the gap until the Assistant City Administrator gets on here full time. It would also be a good way too, we can also use her in times of need going forward. I think it would be a good relationship and she might be a good addition to the city since she'd be a contract employee. We'd only have to use her when we needed her, so.
Right. I do have kind of a one-page sort of resume. I'll just pass this around so you can take a look at it, but I can certainly answer any questions anybody has, otherwise I'll, I'm assuming we need a motion to move forward with this. Anybody have any questions? All right, then I would.
So I actually do have a question. So we had talked previously with the Assistant Administrator. Had we talked about, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, we had talked about moving the roles of Connor into the Assistant City Administrator. So how does this play into that?
So what we talked about is using the dollars for that position towards the Assistant City Administrator, and we still do plan to do that. And there's, there is a balance. I think what we would, what we had envisioned is that the Assistant City Administrator would oversee this function, not necessarily do the function. And, and we were, I guess we were hoping that we would find a consultant that could do it and this person just sort of landed in our lap. We hadn't actually gone out looking. She is fiance for somebody who Jack knows with Metro Innet, which is a consulting firm that does IT for municipalities. And so he knew that we had lost Connor and that we had, you know, we're looking at trying to figure out what we were going to do to sort of fill that need and suggested we talk to his fiancee and she was amazing.
Sure.
And then to answer your question more specifically too, Rob, the funds combining with the other position that was already in the budget with Connor's would allow us to cover this cost this year and also it would be, there would be that balance there in 2025 to cover any expenditure should it go into that year.
So then one more question on this. So we'd pay them $25 an hour and then at the end of the year, would they be issued a 1099?
Yes.
So if they're taking direction from us, is that a legality, Bill?
No, this is not a full-time position. The consultant would be free to determine her hours, how much time she's going to spend on it, whether she's going to spend any time on it, right?
And she uses her own equipment and she, I mean, so she meets all the definition of a consultant. I mean, it's really no different than.
You get where I'm going with that, right?
Yeah, yeah. And I, and I know, and I'm sensitive to that too, but I think it's similar to our other consultants like Ellen, who takes her direction from the Personnel Committee and, I don't know, Bill, do you take your direction from Jack? And so, I mean.
Counsel, yeah.
There's, there's always, there's always some direction that's being given by, by staff or counsel to these positions and this would, would be no different than that.
Sure. At times I just get stuck in my world in construction, you know, the nine-step factor and things of that nature, so.
No, I think she really will, I mean, I'd love it if she came and, you know, we had a big enough need that we could hire someone like her full time. But to be honest, I think what Connor's position taught us was that we hadn't really, we don't really have the volume that supports one full FTE. And so it makes sense to then, and especially, you know, there are people out there that do this stuff on a consulting basis. So it makes sense to try to fill that need this way, at least for now.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else, anyone?
Good questions, though. So then I would move to direct our city administrator to engage in negotiating a contract with fostering, it's fostering communications is her LLC, is that correct? Jack?
Yes.
Ideally, beginning around the beginning of August, and that is to provide website support, social media support, communications, newsletter, things like that. And utilizing the dollars that were already allocated for those services towards Connor Keith's sort of part-time employment and that would then be moved to this consulting and then we would terminate the, the employment contract with, with Connor, which actually is what he wants to.
And we still have about two more, two to three more weeks of work that would be needed from Connor.
Yep.
So at the end of that overlap, then.
Yeah.
You'd switch over to that full, arranging with that person to do this for all things that are going on in that department.
Yeah. And we certainly can have her come and meet all of you if you'd like to meet her. She, I think you'll, you'll find she is, it's super exciting to have someone so excited about helping us and having all these, all this experience to be able to draw from and like, whoa, we could do this. Well, let me look at this website. Well, this website does this. I don't know, let's look and see if yours does and you just haven't utilized that. So it's all good.
All right. This is Sue. I'll second.
Any other questions? All call for the vote.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye.
Janet, aye.
Rob, nay.
And Jesse, aye.
Anything else?
I don't think so. Not from the Personnel Committee.
All right. Now we're onto Public Works. Sign requests for 182nd.
Jim, do you want to take the first one and I'll grab the second one?
The city received an email from Jennifer Wolesko requesting a sign. I'll be honest with you, I don't, I don't really know what a sign says to cover this, but basically she wants a sign saying that there's no turnaround at the end of the road, which is somewhat true. I have never had a request for that. I do not know what that sign would even say. And to be honest with you, I'm not a proponent of signs. I don't know that it's going to cure any troubles either. So I guess what we're here to, we have a request for a sign that says no, I don't know what it'll say. I mean, if you, if you. I mean, if you, if you tell me to move forward with this, we'll have to come up with some creative sign and have it made, because I don't know if there is one out there for it. But I guess where I'm trying to go is she's requesting a sign that says there's no turnaround at the end, because they've had some people go down there with trailers or, you know, bigger vehicles, and they can't turn around. I think we all know the turnaround that we're talking about. We've had many conversations about it, so we're just trying to figure out what, what do you want us to do with it.
Now was the one we improved, right, Jim?
We, no, we did not improve.
We didn't?
No.
Okay.
We actually.
It's a long story.
We had talked about it, right?
And then we stopped. We made it less of a turnaround than it used to be, let's say that.
Okay.
Jim, what was, what was the precipitating factor? I mean, there's one, one instance of a truck going down there, not being able to turn around, or what, do you know what the, like, I can't believe that there's a lot of this happening. I mean, it's clearly a residential road.
In the email, and don't, don't quote me, because I read this thing a couple of weeks ago, it says that Amazon has trouble, and there was a picture of a truck down there with a trailer that was trying to turn around. That, those are the two instances that I know. I have never gotten a call on it until I seen this email. So you couldn't prove to me that's a problem? I can't, I'm not surprised that it's a problem, so.
Is her concern that she doesn't want people using her driveway to, to try to turn
I don't recollect if it stated in there what her concern was, other than there's no turnaround.
Because, I mean, even, even with, you know, kind of where we ended up, I mean, if you had a big trailer or a semi go down there, I could see them having problems turning around, but I can't imagine that that happens even once a year. An Amazon van would have no problem turning around in that space.
I can't, I can't, I can't speak to exactly, other than the truck that I seen that was backed down into the ditch trying to turn around.
I was going to say, why, if anybody's going down there, they're going down to somebody's house, because there's only two driveways. So if there was a delivery, wouldn't they go into that person's driveway and then, and then back out? I mean, how many big trailers are going down there? It would only be for her resident or her neighbor.
Again, I, I mean, I, like I said, I, I can't necessarily answer that. She sent a picture of a, if I remember right, it was a pickup truck with a trailer on there that might have had some sort of equipment on it. I don't remember what it was. Might have been a Skid steer or something. But they were trying to turn around down there, totally opposite of how I would have tried to do it. But nevertheless, it's not, I wouldn't go down there with a truck and trailer at this point without, if I did, I would end up backing all the way out.
But you guys do go down there with a snowplow.
We do. And, and, I mean, we turn around with a single axle dump truck, absolutely. But, and garbage trucks, and I guess at this point, I don't know what school buses do. I assume they still turn around down there somehow.
So what does a sign cost, Jim?
All said and done, I, I mean, 200 bucks?
But it's more about, I mean, there must, there are standard signs, and then there's reasons to put signs up. And I, I just, I'm having a hard time trying to figure out what the reason for putting this sign up is if we don't have.
If we can't, we can't tell somebody they can't turn around, can we?
Or, I mean, can you put up a sign?
It's public right-of-way at the end of the road, and they can turn around best as they can.
Yeah.
But it's just a friendly reminder, isn't it?
Well, then you would want to tell them, we only have so much space for you to turn around. If you can't make it in this space, don't come down here.
Bill?
Mr. Mayor, Council, I don't know, and Jim can answer this, do we use dead-end signs anywhere in?
There, there is a no outlet sign at the beginning of the road. So, because, because there is no outlet.
Right.
It may say no outlet, it may say dead-end, I don't, I don't know which. But it, it does say that.
So that's already there?
Correct.
Then I don't know what would help to have a dead-end signed and say no turnaround?
I, I think she's requesting something that says no turnaround, not dead-end.
That was her turnaround, and with the traffic that could be expected to go down there with most of the delivery-type vehicles now, it's possible to turn around. It may take a little bit of maneuvering, but if you're careful, you can get turned around down there. When it says no turnaround, I think it's trying to express the fact that there's not room enough to exercise a turnaround like a cul-de-sac, but, you know, who knows how anybody's going to interpret that? And I don't think it really matters, because I think the dead, if there's a dead-end, no outlet sign down there, then I think that should be sufficient to cover the problem. And I've been, another place where we had issues with delivery drivers that followed GPS directions over a piece of dedicated but undeveloped city street that only had a 33-foot right-of-way, and they continued to go through, down to there, and they complained to us about it. And they said, we're tearing our mirrors off, we're scratching the top of our vehicles. And the response was, don't go down that way then. There's another way, it's a paved road, quarter of a mile out of your way, use that. I know it's not the same, but sometimes these delivery drivers, they're kind of a.
Has the city received any, I mean, other than Jennifer's inquiry, have we received any complaints from anybody?
I have not.
No?
So her, her email was the first, the first request, or the first person that I've talked to about it, so.
So to this point, are you aware on Iverson Street if there's a dead-end sign? I believe there was at one time.
I can't say that there is.
Okay.
I can tell you that there should be.
Yeah.
So, I mean, there's no outlet, or there's, you know what I mean? So there, they should all be posted that way. Every, every road in town that does not have an outlet should be posted that way. Whether a sign was removed or knocked down, and we don't know about it at this point, they should all be posted that way.
Yeah, it just poses a question, because a lot of people will come from the car dealership, test drive in the car, thinking they can cut back over to Broadway, and they go down Iverson Street at 70 miles an hour. And there's kids that potentially, dogs, cats, yeah, they're not supposed to be on the road, Jim. I know that was coming, but it's a reality, so.
It's not a reason to run them over, though.
Anyway, just wanted to bring that up.
So I guess you're looking for direction. I'm just having a hard time justifying putting a sign up there when there already is one that clearly says there's no outlet, especially if you haven't received any complaints to the city.
What we basically said was, we would bring it to the city council, and we would follow their direction. So if your direction is do nothing, we'll respond to her and say, city council doesn't want to do anything with it. If your direction is, we come up with some sort of sign and we put it up, then we'll do that as well.
Well, I'm just having a hard time figuring out, like, why this road and not every road that doesn't have an outlet. I mean, you know, I mean, there's probably, at the end of Iverson, there's not a lot of space there either, so.
There's a sufficient amount, but, yeah.
But I think there is here, too. I just think, you know, someone got in trouble, and, so anyway, I just think we don't, I don't see the need.
I think I'm going to follow your direction, so you tell me what you want, and that's what we'll do.
You want a motion, or you just want this to say, don't need?
I think direction is fine. I, I would just maybe soften the, the message a little bit in that there is an existing sign. And that seemed to be kind of part of the council's determination that there's existing signage.
So us as a council see that sign as sufficient?
Yeah.
If we're all in agreeance.
Yeah, there is an existing sign. Please reach out to us if there seems to be more problems in the future. So where on this map, Jim, is the existing sign?
I'm not sure what.
On Lexington?
It's going to be, just as you turn off, off of Lexington onto 182nd. It'll be within the first 100 feet. I can, I can maybe zoom in and see how far.
It's a dead-end sign.
No outlet.
I'm going to say it's probably within the first 50 feet of the road.
Sewer system maintenance project. I think we're on to the next.
Want to start it? You probably got more legwork into it than I do at this point.
I'm ready to go. Sewer system inspection cleaning project. The city of Columbus constructed a water and sewer system to serve those properties that abut Interstate Highway 35, a service roads that have commercial, light industrial, and certain high-density residential development opportunities. Sewer portion of this system was constructed in stages, beginning in 2004 and completed in 2008. The system currently serves 53 residential and 20 commercial customers. With the exception of a portion of the Section 3 of the sewer system, which is Zurich Street around Running Aces and exhibited in Attachment 4 in your packet, no cleaning or internal inspection of the system has incurred since it was put into service. To address this concern and minimize city liability regarding sewer backup issues, the city requested quotes to provide sewer cleaning inspection for approximately 38,000 linear feet of sewer line. Two quotes were received, and those are exhibited in Attachments 7 and 8. A third request for this service was contacted, but was non-responsive. Cleaning and internal inspection is the fundamental maintenance function to enhance the operation of the collection system and lift stations and lessen the likelihood of sewer backups. The city of Anoka cleans and inspects approximately one-fourth of their system annually. In Lionel Lakes has a five-year cleaning schedule for their system, with problems cleaned annually or semi, semi-annually. These service intervals are typical for sewer collector and interceptor lines. Sewer backups are primarily due to obstructions in the lines and can result in significant property damage, but can be minimized by scheduledized maintenance to identify and remove potential sources of backups. The city has insurance for backup claims through their League of Minnesota's Insurance Trust coverage. However, implementing a regular system of maintenance policy includes cleaning, line cleaning, lift station, manhole inspection, can lessen certain deductible costs and reduce our exposure to any share of the liability claims and charges. I did attach a link in your packet that gave a little bit more detail on sewer cleaning and what the importance of it is. The benefits of the sewer line cleaning inspection offer efficiency, longevity, and reliability of the sewer infrastructure, following their advantages to performing its essential maintenance program. Early problem detection, reduced risk of backups and overflows. It can help avoid excessive repairs. It optimizes maintenance schedules. It increases flow efficiency and capacity within the lines. It helps in meeting standards that are set by the league in the state, and it provides documentation of existing conditions. And it minimizes and identifies inflow and infiltration problems, and it can lower insurance premiums. Removal of sewage surcharge can cost $7 to $14 per square foot based on industry averages. In general, residential wastewater cleanup and restoration falls between $2,000 to $10,000 per occurrence, depending on the severity of the backup damage. These costs may be up to or exceed $50,000 in some cases, especially if they involve serious plumbing, remediation, and other repair issues. The price for contracting for this service would be $61,750. This expense could be covered by the Capital System Maintenance Funds in the 2024 budget, and the balance from unallocated accumulation rolled over from this line item from 2023. In City Sewer Fund 602 Line Item Capital System Maintenance, $30,000 has been allocated for this type of expense for each of the last three years, with only $7,503 expended during that time period. In addition, City Sewer Fund 602 has a current cash balance of $462,000, with these monies being appropriate funds for emergency and maintenance projects. These are enterprise funds that are collected from sewer system users and are not part of the City General Fund. Staff is recommending that city council consider, institute a cleaning and line inspection program that would meet the requirements recommended by the League of Minnesota Cities, and engage the services of a qualified vendor to implement the cleaning and internal inspection phase of that program. Should city council decide to consider this, I would recommend that a motion be made to improve the contract proposal from Visia Sewer in the amount of $61,750 for sewer cleaning and inspection, and to direct staff to prepare a policy for system inspection and cleaning compliant with LMC's recommended requirements.
I'll take the questions. That was a lot of information.
Yeah, I mean, I was just going to say, I'm surprised that we didn't have one already after putting.
So our system is, I'm going to use the terminology, unique. It's, it's 38,000 linear feet of pipe, which sounds like a lot, but in the grand scheme of things, it's not necessarily that much in comparison to a Forest Lake, or Lionel Lakes, or Wyoming. Our system is also growing extremely slow. So there were portions of our system that potentially weren't used, even though they were installed in 2008. There were no users in that area, so really no need to do any maintenance, because, you know, there's, it's not being used. In years past, we have borrowed jetter trucks from the current city, Wyoming. They used to own one, so we would borrow theirs, and we would jet the line from Running Aces down to basically Priner's Preserve, because that was the heavily used. They had a restaurant, there was grease issues. I mean, we had some, we had some troubles there. After COVID, Running Aces closed their restaurant, and that didn't alleviate the problem, but made it considerably better. But now, now we have some high users. We have the hotel, Running Aces is running strong, we have Loves Travel Plaza, we have these heavy users incrementally around the system now. And now, basically, we need to start doing the maintenance, because, you know, we don't, we don't, we don't want to run into the trouble. The goal of Public Works and the Sewer Water Department is to stay out of the news, and this is part of it, so.
Okay, thank you for that. That makes sense. Is the $61,750, that's just to implement a maintenance program?
Nope. That, that base, that $61,000, whatever the total number is, that basically jets and cameras our whole entire system. And when they go through, so they clean it, and then they run a camera through there, and then we get that footage from the camera, and we can, we will know what the, what we'll call them hotspots, like this, this is a problem area here, we see INI here, and we can look at that, and that camera shows the footage everywhere, so we can literally say it's 250 feet from this manhole. We can go to a manhole, measure 250 feet. If there's INI there, we could dig a hole, and we can make that repair. So you clean it, then you run the camera through, or they kind of do it simultaneously, actually, but that shows us where all of our problem areas are, and then we can keep an eye on that. So if we have areas that aren't what we're going to say problematic, we can push that time out a little bit, and if we have areas that are, are problematic, we maybe end up having to do those more frequent. As a general rule of thumb, they talk about every four to six years. Most people do five. I don't see a reason why we can't go to six at this point, but, you know, we'll know more, obviously, after they run a camera through that, or say, everything looks good, or you have problem areas that we need to keep an eye on.
So when you were jetting the pipes, or whatever you were doing before, you just don't, you don't have a camera, you were just jetting it, and?
We just, we just cleaned it. So we, all of our pipes were camered when they were new, but they have not had a camera in them since they've been new. I can tell you, we may run into some problem areas. We've had some connections. I know when Muddy Paw is hooked up, that pipe, their, their actual connection was broken. So, you know, we potentially could have some INI, we could have some, you know, mud or gravel, or sand, or something that is getting into the system. So, you know, it's prob, it's not a bad idea for us to do the whole thing and know exactly where we sit today, and then we can come up with a, you know, maybe, maybe the next run, the maintenance plan looks slightly different, so.
One of the things that's useful to do, the TV or the video inspection of the pipe is, we talked about the flow charges. is we talked about the flow charges from Met Council, what they're up to. Some of that could actually be infiltration of groundwater into the existing pipes or inflow from leaky manholes, illegal connections. I don't think we probably have that situation here. In a lot of older cities, people used to hook their roof drains up to the sewer lines, sump pumps up to the sewer lines, which means clean water was discharged in there, but then they were charged for treating it. Sometimes this can be highly significant, up to the point where it actually floods smaller treatment plants out. So it's good to know what that situation is, too. It could reduce some of our flow charges, but instead of reducing it, it's probably more a preventive thing. We have a record of it to document what we have. If we find something, we can fix it, and it may help stabilize those in the future, too. But this is a thing that's typical and standard for maintaining sewer systems. I just used the two, what Anoka and Lino had, just because I was looking for some other stuff, but probably every system around us has some maintenance program that sets this up. They either have the equipment to do it or contracted, and in our situation, it's much more efficient and cheaper for us to contract this out.
If you've looked at the contract, too, they will probably be here for the better part of a month. So, I mean, it's an extensive process. The hard part about our system is it's not in the middle of the street like in most communities. A lot of our stuff is in the ditch, along a busy county road, so, I mean, there's just not, it's not an easy process, and it's time-consuming. And expensive. I mean, if you buy a jetter truck, they're comparable to fire truck money. So, I mean, they're expensive.
So, Jack, you said the money is already there to do this, correct?
Correct. What we have is, you know, we talked about the system maintenance charges when we had the little budget discussion here. We would use $30,000 from that, from this year's budget, and then the balance of it, we would take from the sewer fund balance of $462 to pay for the rest of it. And again, these are, these fees are collected from users, and this doesn't affect the general levy at all.
Okay.
Well, to me, it sounds like a sensible safeguard.
Yes, I totally agree.
Especially after all these years. So, anybody else have an opinion?
I just have one question. I agree that it sounds like a sensible safeguard, but there's, so in terms of lowering our insurance premium, there's a lot of maze. Do we know for sure it will, or we don't know?
We don't know, but we know for certain if we have this, it's going to help them not going up. The biggest thing is if we don't have this policy, if we don't do this service, if we have a sewer backup, the league may come back to say this and says, "Well, we're going to cover part of this, but because you didn't have this maintenance program in place, we can't cover it up to the limit of liability of the policy."
I mean, don't we know, can we, I'm not saying we shouldn't do it. This is more of a question from a policy standpoint. I mean, it seems to me if we read our policy, it's, there's going to be language in there to that effect. It would be, I mean-
What language? Can you clarify that?
Well, so if the league's policy says you need to, I know they have guidelines in here, and so I actually couldn't get on there because my internet didn't come back to life until I was just ready to come here. But if the league's recommendations are that you should, you know, do a visual inspection and, you know, jet clean it out every, however often, and if you don't, then you might incur a higher deductible or a higher whatever. I mean, there would be some language in that. It just seems to me that we're drawing, that we might be making some conclusions that isn't really based on any fact. It's just kind of like, well, if we follow their guidelines, they're going to be nicer to us.
Yeah, I understand where you're coming from, and those portions of that were more or less copied and pasted from the league's website. But we could contact them to see if they have any indications of what those cost reductions or increases could be.
Well, and the reason I'm saying that, too, is because, again, I'm not in opposition to doing it this, you know, doing it now, but as you set a policy and decide you're going to do this every five years or four years or six years or whatever, I mean, we are so much smaller than Anoka, and we are so much smaller than Lino Lakes. And I would guess that there must be some numbers of users or numbers of gallons or numbers of something that guides sort of how often something like this should be done, or the types of users, like if there's a lot of commercial users, like you said, that, you know, dumping grease and other things down there versus residential or a lot of apartments.
I think what we find out in this first thing would determine what the schedule would be, and there are probably some areas, you know, that have limited users on them. There's other ways to do some visual inspections. It's like to go out, take, go out at night, say around 2:00 in the morning, open some manhole covers just to see what the flows are. If there's no flows, then you're probably in pretty good shape. But I think the inspection, the initial inspection would determine what the maintenance schedule would be going forward.
Okay.
Like I kind of said, once we go through this the first time, we'll have an idea of, you know, North Hornsby, there's, you have a coffee shop there. How much use is there? Not very much. Do we need to do that one every six years? I don't know. I mean, we don't know right now, right?
Right.
I will also tell you that we do not have an adopted sewer policy, so you'll be seeing that come through now that we're going to start this plan. So I wrote one a few years ago. We've updated it. I gave a copy to Jack, so between him and Public Works and I, we'll, you know, firm it up, and then, you know, you'll be seeing that here in the next month or two.
And that draft was included in your packet, and like, that's the one that can be updated. Once we get the data, if we do this from that, then that will kind of determine what our schedule is going to be for the future.
Yeah, no, it's great. I think, you know, having this spelled out is a good thing, so.
Also, as part of the packet, there's, I think there's four maps in there, and they kind of have, it's kind of broke up into sections. I might have to tweak those sections a little bit, but it's kind of, it's in quadrants, you know what I mean? They all kind of feed together, and they all end up going to the same place. So, you know, it might not be as easy as doing it in that, it might not be as easy as those maps say for future, but I think, I think once we do it the first time, we're going to be able to go through and say, "This is not a very highly-used spot. We don't need to do this one that often." So I think the language changes a little bit in the policy that says, you know, "We're going to do it this often or as needed" type of scenario.
Hey, Jim, with that deal over there by Muddy Paws, would that camera pick that up?
I don't know if the camera would have picked that up, but I believe, depending on where it breaks, you'll see gravel in the-
Sewer line?
In the sewer line. So if it breaks further away, you may not, but if it breaks closer to the main, then you will.
Has that been repaired, or is it still?
Yeah, so when Muddy Paws was hooking up, that contractor repaired it right there. So we were, we were looking at it, and we're like, something's wrong here, you know what I mean? So then they ended up digging down a little bit further and seeing that the pipe was collapsed, and then, you know, made the repairs, and, you know, everything is good today, but.
And one more thing about this is that a big portion of this, too, is to identify our inflow infiltration, which is what that INI acronym is. And since most of our lines are probably underwater, as far as the water table goes, it's very important to keep up with that. We may find out that there's some gaskets that weren't properly sealed or pinched and don't seal good, or emitting water at the joints around manholes that may be contributing significantly to our flow when we don't need to be paying for clean water to be treated.
So do you need a motion or a?
Yes, and I apologize if the motion wasn't included in your packet, but I could read the motion if you'd like, that I'd like to have you consider. And that motion would be to approve the contract proposal from Visu Sewer in the amount of $61,750 for sewer cleaning inspection and to direct staff to prepare a policy for system inspection and cleaning compliant with the League of Minnesota Cities' recommended requirements.
So moved. Is there a second?
Ron, I'll second it.
Any other questions or discussion? I'll call for the vote.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye. Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
Jesse, aye.
Thank you.
Anything else, Jim?
Nope, that's it.
City Administrator.
I first have a couple things. One of them, we mentioned earlier about calling for a joint meeting with the Planning Commission or the Park Board for August the 14th at 5:00 p.m. before our regular scheduled meeting at 6:00 p.m. Is that a desire for council to pass on to the Park Board?
Yeah, I'm good with that.
I'm good.
All right. The other thing I wanted to remind everybody of is if anybody wants to go to the local government officials meeting, which is July 31st, I need to send an RSVP in by tomorrow evening, so if you want to go, let me know, and I'll take care of that. Also, I want to remind everybody, too, that we're having still absentee balloting, and we'll, this will be the last time we'll get to make this announcement before the public. But City Hall will be open on August the 11th, August the 10th, from 10:00 to 5:00 on Saturday for, or 10:00 to 3:00 on Saturday for anybody that wants to come in and vote on the weekend. And City Hall will also be open Monday before the election until 5:00 for that voting also. And the other thing that I have on this is that Mrs. Shannon Hoshel appeared before us at the public forum. They're requesting us to approve Resolution 2024-05, which is at your seat for the raffle, which will be conducted at Running Aces on August the 1st, and I would request your approval on that resolution.
Yeah, I can make, want me to make the motion?
Assistant Rob, I move to approve Resolution 20-05 authorizing the Minnesota Lady Slipper Pheasants Forever Chapter Number 07772 to conduct a raffle at 15201 Running Aces Boulevard.
And you just need to correct. You said 20-05. It's 24-05.
All right. 24-05.
Ron, I'll second it.
It's moved and seconded. Any more questions?
I'll step in for Jesse. Do any more discussion? Let's do a vote.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye. Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
Jesse, aye.
Perfect.
And the last thing under City Administrator Report is we will review the monthly financial report, and Cheryl will give that to you now.
So the financial report was included in your packet. This is something, you know, we created, we started last month. We will continue to do for you. We are on track with most areas. I did want to point out Public Works. If you notice, their expenditures are quite large, but I wanted to point out that the $300,000 payment that we made to Anoka County, we'd already received that $300,000 in funding back in 2021. For some reason, there was a lengthy delay in them sending that bill to us, so we did pay that out of this year. So it may look like Public Works expenditures are exceeding their budget, but just keep in mind, there's that $300,000 payment that we've already received the revenue for. It wasn't in Jim's budget, so that can skew his numbers a little bit.
Thank you.
Did anybody have any questions? Any specific questions on any items?
So I just have a question on that. So it's over because we paid that $300,000, but we received the invoice in 2021?
No, we received the funds in 2021. And then there was a delay in them actually invoicing us for the final part of that project. We just received the invoice this year.
I didn't think we received the funds. I thought that was part of the problem before.
Nope, when we-
It happened so long ago that we didn't know if we did or not. So that was kind of the catch-22, so.
And I can't see 2021 anymore in our financial system, so I reached out to a couple of very nice gentlemen at the state, and they did some digging for me, and they provided me with the payment advice through the SWIFT system, and through that, I was able to backtrack through our system and actually verify that we did receive the funds.
Thank you for doing that.
And then the second question is, where are we with getting things figured out with animal control?
We had another bill that had three or four impoundments, which had to be paid by the city. Our last conversation with them was that they were building a new facility, and we haven't had any conversations with them since then. What our hope was, is that was an anomaly, but since it's not an anomaly and appears to be a pattern now, we will open the conversation up with them to see what we can do to lessen that. The last ones, though, fit into what their contract said. It was their cost for picking these up, and we don't really have any means of control over that, so.
Well, and I get that, but I think what we had talked about was figuring out a process to go back and charge the owner of the animal. I mean, so if they're picking up the animal, then we know who owns it. And I don't know what the legalities of that are. Maybe you can speak to that, but it seems to me that, you know, that there should be a process established that then we can try to recover those costs from the dog owners.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Cheryl, but in these cases, the dogs were picked up, the owner was not identified, nobody came to pick the dog up. So in some cases like this, there will be those situations where we'll not know who the owner is.
And I get that, but I thought that was like one out of all of them that were there. Because they say recovered, so it means that somebody came and picked up the dog. They didn't pick, they didn't pay because they weren't asked to pay because Humane Society's not collecting dollars that way?
Nope. So the charges that we're getting from Britt are just her charges.
Right.
Nothing to do with the Humane Society.
Right, so we need to turn around and bill those back to the people who own the dogs. And she was going to send us the names of who those people were? So where are we with that?
We haven't received anything back from her, but we will make a point to reopen that conversation.
And then how do you do that bill? Do you just send them an invoice, or do you have to have a policy that backs that up? Or what do we have to have in place so that we can legally go back and assess them?
I think the best and clearest way would be a simple ordinance amendment.
Okay.
We can figure out where that would be, because then we are indicating that the city has adopted not only a policy, but a legal requirement that they be responsible for those costs.
Okay. We can add that to a list of our ordinances to tackle.
The only one I have a question on is emergency management.
So that one is also different. The emergency management, that's where any COVID or ARPA funds came from? So we had the pre-development COVID grant through Anoka County. We were doing some work with the Northwest Quad, and so originally, our COVID and ARPA money went into 142, which is public safety. So I am continuing to put money into 142 and pay money out. So the $13,000, I think it was $800 that we spent on the assessing, and there was a delineation. We've already gotten that money back from Anoka County.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Anyone?
Nope.
Anything else for us, Cheryl?
Nope, that's it. Nope, that's it.
Janet, Finding Commission.
I already did. So I, there's a report in your packet on page 47. As I mentioned earlier, I, there really, there was no action taken. It was, they were reviewing a list of ordinances that were scheduled to be updated, and, and they also talked about two chapters of the city code that require some housekeeping changes, and the Planning Commission agreed with the recommended staff changes, and so they, they did call for a public hearing, which I don't know if it's been scheduled or not yet, but that was really, that was pretty much all the, all of the action at the Planning Commission.
Thank you. And so, onto letter E. Announcements and reminders. Absentee voting, June 28th through August 12th, City Hall offices. City Council candidate filing, July 30th through the 13th. Public Works Committee meeting, July 31st at 5:00 p.m. City Council workshop meeting, August 5th to 6th, at 6:00. Night to Unite is August 6th. Planning Commission City Council meeting, August 7th. Primary Election Day is August 13th, 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. And our next City Council meeting is August 14th, 2024, at 6:00 p.m. And now we're going to, the council will have a closed meeting to consider offers to purchase a city-owned real estate property identified as PID 243222120005 and PID 24322211006 pursuant to Minnesota Statutes, Section 13D.05 subdivision 3C3.